Mask on or off?
Off for the podium.
I thought I could only do that when I was eating and I didn't think it'd be appropriate. Mark Burdette here, commercial real estate broker, and Mr. Roger Martin, developer, And we are looking at purchasing, he is looking at purchasing 1519 Waxall Indian Trail Road. So there is, currently, we have a buyer that has the property under contract, and their vision was to develop and put 38 townhomes on it. That's not going to fly, and so we are, Mr. Martin is looking at developing it and rezoning it and developing it, and putting a couple of warehouses on the property. If you go to the, who's running?
We actually have a clicker.
Oh, okay. Thank you. You can tell I've been here many times before.
Is that the over air?
Thank you. So the current zoning on the property is a single-family residential SO1 on one of the parcels, and the larger parcel, the commercial parcel, is zone MBD. We'll be looking, hopefully, to, if we can consummate the deal, to rezone it to light industrial and construct two 8,000 square foot buildings approximately. There are the two parcels. The parcel in white is the residential parcel, light blue is the commercial parcel. The residential parcel currently has a rental house on the property. The commercial property is vacant. Maybe a rabbit or two. The location of the parcels are Waxall and Indian Trail Road. Is there a pointer on here? And so there's CVS in the water tower, and then there are the subject parcels. So we hired a landscape architect to do a conceptual drawing of the properties, or of the placement of the buildings on the property. And if you look at that, we'll see, you can see the layout. One lane in, we understand there's going to have to be a turn lane put in place there for left turn. And this will run along the southeast side of the property, the entrance, the ingress egress. And these are buildings that Mr. Martin has built that are on...
What street is that on?
Independence Commerce Drive.
He's built several of those, and those are a couple of elevations, all brick, metal roof. And I think that's it. We're ready for questions.
Okay, I'm very familiar with this piece of property, and I've had a lot of discussions with the folks in Deerstein, and the first thing is, of course, there's been water issues, and so, also, I know them, plus I know Roy at New York Pizza and Pasta. So interesting that we got the two different relationships, but I see that you got a proposed stormwater detention pond, retention pond, or whatever it's called. And of course, the folks over at Deerstein are going to be very interested in a water issue. And one of the things that I guess I'm a little bit concerned with is, there won't be tractor-trailers coming in here, will there, with a lot of noise, or will there, will there be?
I think the answer is a definite yes. There would be tractor-trailers under the assumption that it were, the zoning permitted it.
Uh huh.
If you, if tractor-trailers cannot come into the project, then it's a bid project. Because the potential tenants depend on tractor-trailers, and the trucking companies have stopped delivering with stakebody trucks. The Independence Commerce Project, I haven't seen a stakebody truck come in there in probably 10 years.
So you're talking about a straight truck?
Straight truck.
Are you to have enough traffic, I mean, enough room in the back there for, in between these buildings, for tractor-trailer to pivot and do what they need to do?
We'll still have to massage that site plan because he has a planting island at the end of each of those parking rows for the automobiles, and that, those parking islands will be destroyed shortly.
How many tenants do you plan to have?
25-foot bays, and so if there's probably eight, 16, 16 at the most. Those two buildings, as you'll notice, one of them's about 80 feet deep, and the other one, I think, is 60. So these tenants are small users. Typically, the project that I'm at, we have no, I haven't allowed it because it's a clean project we started it to start with, and that is no heating and air conditioning contractors, no plumbers, no landscapers, no mechanics, no paint shops. And so my project is, is very clean, very neat, didn't, whichever day of the week you go, it's, it's clean. The landscaping is polished weekly. Takes a lot of effort, but we've handled it so far.
Would you say they mostly would be eight-five businesses? I mean, they wouldn't be going 24 hours a day, do you think?
No eight to fives. There's some folks that are going to end up working late. I got some computer guys now, and they're probably there until 10 o'clock at night, as far as I know.
But tractor-trailers probably wouldn't be coming in past not 5:00, would you think?
No. The only vehicle that you would find in there after hours like that in the AM would be trash control, and they run that route and are in the street, on that street, at about 2:00 AM, somewhere between 2:00 and 4:00 AM.
In the morning, okay. I'm going to ask you all these questions because I know I'll be, I'll be hit with them, but is there, what do you plan to do between your property and the Deerstein folks? Are you going to have any kind of like noise reduction wall of some type, or is there anything you could maybe do with that?
There is a present buffer of some pretty big trees, poplar and sweet gum. You can see that fairly narrow line. How that will end up after a detention pond is put in there, I'm not sure.
Well, that's going to give you some distance between you and them, which will help.
Exactly.
So you, about how far do you think it would be? Would it be 20 feet away, or 30 feet, or?
If you look at the diagram there, you can see the setback.
I just, I don't see any scale, though, as to how far back it's going to be.
It's, the, as far as I know, the inside landscape buffer line is 50 feet from their property line.
50 feet.
I'm not positive that's your rear yard setback.
Okay. And then past that, then you've got parking spaces?
You've got the detention pond first, and then parking spaces.
Detention pond, is that going to be part of the 50 feet going back, or?
No. As shown, it is not included in that 50.
Oh, okay, okay. So you're probably looking at 60, 70 feet at least away from the Deerstein people?
Close to, close to 200.
It says...
Now, I'm sorry, close to 100 or 125.
Okay.
The edge of the detention pond is 60 feet from the property line.
Okay. And so I know they're elevated, I mean, the property's elevated, but you could possibly put maybe a berm over there or something when you're grading to maybe shield them a little bit more from any kind of noise? Would that be practical?
That is, that is an option, but a berm will probably mean the destruction of those big tall trees.
Okay, yeah, okay. All righty. And, well, the main thing right now with them too is, you know, this is going to help with the water issue, as we all know about that. Okay. That's really, I think probably most of their traffic in and out of there will be UPS and FedEx trucks that'll be small, and then just occasionally, maybe three or four times a week, a tractor-trailer come in and drop off something? It's hard for you to know what your tenants are going to do, and what they, you don't already have them rented, do you? So you don't know what they're going to...
Right. These buildings will not be, first of all, they'll be subdivided into multiple tenant spaces.
Right.
Bays are 25 feet wide, and as shown here, they would be either 80 feet deep or 60 feet deep.
Uh huh.
So you don't have a big tenant, there's not a big place for him to put something in the building after the truck drops it.
Right.
And the project that I've finished is in Matthews. They do not allow any outside storage, and we've, we've managed to live with that easily, with the exception, I cannot keep the tenants from leaving the wood pallets outside. I have to get on them pretty regularly by the wood pallets.
That's a problem. I, I used to have that problem.
So that's the pictures you're showing. That's the complex over in Matthews?
Yes.
Over near the countryside end?
Yes.
Okay. Modern Business Machines over there, Thomas Pest Control. Now, I thought they bought, are you selling the units or leasing the units?
I condoed the units, and I've sold probably 45 percent...
Some of the ones over there are for sale. So the ones here going to be for sale like that, too?
No, probably not. I wish at this point that I had not sold anything in this project.
Okay.
Just, just because the, the buildings are rare and unusual in today's marketplace. There's no decent land left.
But that's a nice complex. I mean, and, you know, there's not going to be a lot of tractor-trailers if it's like the complex over at Matthews. I know, you know, you must know Tom Viscount, he had one over there, and he moved Indian Trail for a bigger space, so...
Right.
And I think Modern Business Machine was in the other, beside him, as I think that they used to be in Monroe, so, but yeah, that's a nice complex. Not going to be a lot of tractor-trailers there, but, you know, we do, we would have a concern about the water runoff, of course. There's been an issue with that property and the neighboring Deerstein, so...
Yeah, I think the big issues...
Do you want to ask any questions?
Big issues are water and noise would be the two things to be concerned about, but we need light industrial here and give better jobs and that sort of thing, so...
They're not big enough to be manufacturers, or, you know, distributors, I should say, or manufacturers.
Light assembly, distribution.
Sure.
And you'll notice there's no loading docks there.
Yeah.
But that's a nice complex, if it's going to be like the one in Matthews, that's a nice...
Same, same building style?
I'm sorry?
It's going to be the same building style that you see in the pictures, or?
Under the assumption it meets your architectural guidelines, yes.
Okay.
As you'll notice, I used, I use a gable roof. Everything in O'Hickory is a shed roof, but you don't know that because the shed is hid behind the front facade. With the correct, with other correct architectural features, I think these buildings look just as well, and...
Attractive, yeah.
If not better, particularly since everything you see there is bricked all the way around.
The ones here are going to be bricked, kind of like that, too?
Yes.
Okay. That's a nice design.
That is.
Anybody got any other questions? Thank you very much.
Brandy, you have something to say? Brandy wanted to speak.
Oh, well, yeah. We didn't want to leave her out.
Sorry, I did want to quickly comment on, Todd reminded me there is a sewer easement that runs to the rear of this property, so I heard a conversation about a berm, and just wanted to let you know that that would not be possible because of that sewer. The 50-foot that they're showing is code. Now, this project would go through conditional rezoning where we can negotiate things like the stormwater buffers, but I would imagine that you would want to stick with the code or go greater based on the, the input from Deerstein. And then, any comments that you have after this, if you'll feel free to send those to Adam, and he'll direct them to me. Thank you.
Will there be, one more question? Will it be just regular power, or will there be three-phase? What type of power do you plan to run in?
We purposely have not used three-phase. I've had one or two folks over the last 10 or 12 years to ask for it, but we're single-phase.
Okay, yeah, that means there won't be a lot of noise of equipment.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
We're out of workshop. I understand Councilman McIntyre is not going to be here, and our town manager, Mike McLawrence, everybody will know, is on medical leave, and we've got the Honorable Adam McLan filling in for him. He's our acting town manager, so...
Thank you, sir.
If you've got any complaints, call Adam. Anyway, if, Mr. Ambergy, would you leave us in the pledge of allegiance? Everybody stand, please.
(Inaudible) in the United States of America, in the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, living, even just as far out.
Everybody, please, bow for a moment of silence, and this moment of silence again is in honor of our late Mayor Michael Alvarez. Amen. Please be seated. We have three items that have been added to the agenda. I only need a motion if anybody disputes it. Is everybody okay with the agenda additions? Thank you. Is that right, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to accept the amended agenda?
Do a motion to accept? We need a motion to accept them. I get a motion to accept the additions.
I make motion?
Councilman Gay has made the motion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved by Councilwoman Buholick. All those in favor, raise your hand. Agenda has been approved. We need to go into closed session, so I need a motion to enter it into closed session.
A motion.
Okay. Councilman Ambergy's made the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. We're now going into closed session. So moved by Mr. Ambergy. All those in favor, raise your hand. We're now out of closed session and back into regular session. Next, we have Mr. Kramer up for our Christmas parade winners. Let's see who's bringing home the hardware.
I always order myself one of these trophies, and my wife says, "Wow, you must be really good." And I said, "That's what happens when you bring it home, you know."
Everyone gets one.
Yeah, right. Just the person that orders it, so I could, I could be king of anything for 12 bucks. But appreciate your time here, Mayor Protem and the rest of council. I hope you're having a good evening. Truly, never a bad day in Indian Trail. This evening, I wanted to wrap up our Christmas parade. As you know, it's traditionally hosted on the first Sunday of December, where we were honored, honored to have several of you in attendance, and hopefully we'll continue to see that through the rest of the parades during your terms. As many of you know, we, we have a lot of help and support when it comes to putting on the parades. Now, first, I'll look to our Union County Sheriff's. You know, we, we've already met about this year's Christmas parade, you know, and other events and things of that nature, so they are there behind the scenes doing work at the parade, before the parade, after the parade, and everything in between. Everything from arranging vehicles for hard barricades, to putting cones out, to blocking off every side street, making sure the roads are closed down. Second, we work with our Union West Rotary Club. They are the ones that, that are down there on Post Office Drive, somehow shuffling hundreds of cars around and milling people from, from here to there to make sure that when everybody steps off, A, it's on time, and B, it's in order. Third, we, we work with the Indian Trail Lions Club. They have the hardest job of the day. They have to pick out some winners, so over the 70 floats that go by, they are the ones that select the four. I'll repeat that, so if anyone's listening that's mad they didn't win, it's the Indian Trail Lions Club. I believe they meet the second Monday at Johnny K's and the fourth Monday here, so feel free to give them a shout if, if anyone's discouraged. But truly also want to give a special shout out to the parking rec staff and the rest of the staff that, that makes this possible. Everything from making sure the vehicles start and have brakes and are gassed up, and the trailers are ready to go, and decorated, and things of that nature. So overall, truly, I think it was an amazing day, bringing the community together, which is exactly what we're here to do. Like I mentioned, we had over about 70 groups involved, so that was Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, schools, businesses, organizations, everyone in between. Tree lighting, if, if Tom Andrew McLawrence was here, he calls it a hallmark moment, you know, so again, truly bringing it together, counting down, lighting the town Christmas tree, all in one good spirit. Truly takes a community to come out and make a parade happen, and it was a truly amazing showing by the community. So up here, what you have are four pictures of the winners. So the, the most creative was Carolina Cruisin' for Jeeps. They had about a quarter mile of jeeps in there. I don't know if that's an accurate statement, but it seemed like it. After that, we have, oh, I guess I can control this, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Most spirited, so this was Rolling Thunder DJ Productions, so they had a live nativity scene for us. The best youth was our Porter Ridge Elementary School Choir that, that came out, and were singing some carols for us. And then finally, the most youth of red and green went to the local Girl Scout Troop 140. So on a positive note, we've already touched base with Santa and Mrs. Claus. We are all still on the nice list, so let's keep it that way the rest of the year, and we are, like I said, getting ready for, for the rest of the year's events. So if you have any questions for me, by all means, let me know. If not, we will deliver the hardware. The majority of them have been picked up, but want to make sure that we get this over to the Girl Scouts when they have their next meeting.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. Kramer? The only thing I say is, I think we all remember the tree lighting countdown by Mr. World.
Absolutely, absolutely. Appreciate it, everyone. Have a great night.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
The individuals that signed up tonight, are you signing up for public comments or the public hearing? Wyatt Austin, Sam McCracken, Kim Sturkey, and May Stunk?
Um, Kim and Laurie are for second chance, we're here in place of Tracy.
Okay, so you're, you're here for the second chance, which, Kim and...
Five.
Okay. So that's Kim.
Sturkey.
Okay. So you're here for that. Okay, so that's Slater, and then, I can't read the last name, is it Stirk, Stark?
Oh, excuse me, Laurie Stewart, sorry.
Okay. That's right. And then Wyatt Austin and Sam McCracken, you're here for public comments?
Yeah, we're here about the skating.
You're here on the other. Okay, gotcha. I knew that, so just making sure. All righty, no public comments.
We have no public comments?
Unless you ask, and somebody hasn't signed up, they're here for other parts of the presentation.
Some of y'all look like you'd have some comments, but that's okay. February in this country is Black History Month, and the town of Indian Trail would like to issue the following proclamation. Whereas Black History Month is annual celebration of achievements and a time for recognizing the central role of black American people in our history. Whereas the observance affords a special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have continued to strive for equality and have together made significant contributions in the growth of our communities, state, and nation. Whereas we recognize and honor a few of the many prominent historical black leaders who, while as not as well-known as Harriet Tubman, Thurgood Marshall, and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., all have made significant contributions to advancing black lives, our communities, and our nation as a whole. W.B. Dubus, born 1868, was an influential activist who sought to campaign for full equality between blacks and whites. And while he did not live to see significant change, he laid the framework for the NAACP and future civil rights movements. Dr. Charles R. Drew, born 1904, was an American physician who developed ways to process and store blood plasma in blood banks. He organized the first large-scale blood bank in the U.S. and directed blood plasma programs for the United States and Great Britain during World War II. And Shirley Chisholm, born 1924, was elected to the New York House of Representatives in 1968, where she used her time in Congress to campaign for women's and civil rights. She was the first black Congresswoman and first black woman to run for the Democrat presidential nomination. Whereas in 1976, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month, and is now celebrated all over North America, Canada, and Great Britain. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all citizens of the town of Indian Trail to remember the contributions and legacy of those who helped build our nation, fought against prejudice to secure lives of dignity and opportunity for all our citizens, advanced the cause of civil rights for all Americans, and in doing so greatly strengthened our families and communities. Now therefore, I, Todd Barber, Mayor Protem for the town of Indian Trail, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as Black History Month in Indian Trail, North Carolina, and call on the citizens of the town of Indian Trail to honor the history and achievement of black Americans, and to reflect on the centuries of struggle that have brought us to this time of reckoning, redemption, and hope. This is duly proclaimed this eighth day of February 2022. Thank you. And I hope everybody will honor those that come before us. Next, we have Skateboard Park. We got Sean McKicken and Wyatt Austin. I'm going to take it Tony Hawk's not here?
(Inaudible).
Okay. Go ahead, you're up.
All righty. Good evening. My name is Wyatt Austin, and this is my friend Sam McMackin. We come before you tonight to see if, would the council be willing to consider a skateboard park for next year's capital projects list for the budget for next year? So we believe that a skateboard park would bring a lot of positive for the community because we believe that for recreation, it's good for everyone who wants to come out and just hang out with their friends or get some good exercise, but it could also be good for business, and I think it could attract a lot of, it could even attract a skateboard shop, and it could just attract new people to the area. So we are from, we're natives, so we both went to Port Ridge High School, and we've been skating since we were kids, and we would love to have a skate park here.
With skateboarding becoming an Olympic sport, there has been a rise in popularity in skating, showing that it's much more than just a sport or a hobby, it can also be a lifestyle. According to a study from the University of Southern California published in 2020, skateboarding improves mental health, fosters community, encourages diversity, and resilience.
And our vision for this skate park is to have a safe, positive, and free place for anyone to go and do what they love in Indian Trail. And as enthusiasts, we couldn't agree with that more, so for this reason, we are requesting that the town consider constructing and maintaining a skate park for community recreation.
Currently, the closest skate parks take at least 20, 30 minutes to get to, and with traffic, it can be even longer. Some of those skate parks include Grayson Skate Park, Waxaw Skate Park, and Renaissance Skate Park. The distance from Indian Trail to other skate parks means that people who really want to skate aren't able to in a safe envi, in a safe environment, and this can lead to street skating, which is dangerous because it's in an uncontrolled environment. Parents need a safe, healthier alternatives for their kids who want to skate. Community skate park could be a part of Indian Trail's total recreation package and offer a safe alternative to the streets or other public property where skateboarding is inappropriate.
Now that we realize that with running a skate park, there are a lot of liabilities, and I was actually able to get in contact with the Waxalls Parks and Recs Director, Ms. Dina Sabinski, and we discussed how she runs her skate park, and she basically told me that they get all their insurance through the NC League of Municipalities, and the rules and hours are posted on their gate, so it's obvious when people are supposed to be there and when they can, and all the rules, and the rules could be attached as skateboards only and scooters only, no freestyle bikes except during specific town events, children ages 10 and under must be supervised by an adult at all times, no food or drink inside the park, no waxing, helmets and safety gear are to be worn at all times, and no loitering, and no hanging out just in the park being in everyone's way. So I think that there's a lot that, that we could take from other skate parks for this, so we could also add like security cameras and, you know, have maybe community police patrol or a litter plan, or just, just to make sure that, you know, everyone's safe, and I believe that if the police, you know, maybe would patrol a little bit and get to know the skaters, that could definitely have a positive, you know, impact... impact on the kids and with law enforcement.
We believe that the skate park can bring many benefits to the community. The youth is the backbone of the community and they are the future. So if you want to keep the youth in the community, you need to build accommodations that make the youth want to stay. The skate park is a good way to keep the kids safe off the streets or from getting into trouble. Skate park can open doors for other businesses such as skate shops, which will boost the town's economy, attracting even more business to the town. Lastly, it will build, help build positive relationships with the youth and its leaders because they'll feel like they'll have a voice.
Yeah, so this was a flyer that we posted and we posted this on our social medias and we even had printouts that we just went into heavily populated areas and just kinda put them up. We, we went to some skate shops around the area, biggest being Black Sheet Skate Shop in Charlotte. And on their social media, they have over a hundred thousand followers on their social media accounts. And they were extremely nice enough to repost us and I received a lot of message. I received over sixty messages from kids saying how much this would be a great idea. And I think it would really benefit the town because. Well, with kids, they, if they have a good skate park, they will come. Anyone will come to a good skate park. And I a hundred percent believe that because obviously, we are willing to drive thirty to forty minutes to go to someone else's skate park. And I think it would be in the town's. How would I say this? So I think that it would be in the town's benefit to build a really good skate park because if you look at all the other designs, I mean, they could re- you could really build the best skate park in our area and then everyone would come. So this wouldn't be just business for Indian Trail people, but this is people coming from all over to see this. So. They were very nice enough to just shout us out and give us our, their support for us. So yeah, there's Black Sheep Skate Shop. And then another Waxaw Pinky Out Skate Shop, they also gave us our, their support. Okay, so on behalf of Sam and I, we would like to thank everyone for, you know, listening to our, our ideas and our dreams. And I would like to thank Ms. Kathy Queen for taking all of our emails and helping us out and getting us in touch with people. And I would especially like to thank the late Michael Alvarez because without him, this really wouldn't have even come to us as a possibility to come and speak. And he really made us say that, hey, if you want something, you gotta go talk about it. And I believe that he's done so much for the community and so much for us. And if a skate park was to be built in just by this, we propose that we name it the Michael Alvarez Memorial Skate Park after him and supporting our dream. So. Thank you for your time and listening to our dream.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Gade, do you have any questions?
Not really. Now, I, I'm assuming you probably wanted it to park or where, where's your envision of where this would be?
So our envision and we kinda looked over like the city land that the city owns already. And we thought that Crooked Creek would be a possible spot. Now, I don't, you know, know everything about the land out there, but I just know there's a lot of acreage out there that could possibly be used. And then we had a, on our updated slides that we didn't get to you guys, but uh, we sent it over. And um, it has a possibility for like a design template. And it's like how much square feet it would be and how much all it would cost. It's, it's all rough estimates, but I think something like that could be done. And and it wouldn't only just a skate park. We think it could open an opportunity for skate park, like basketball courts, walking tracks, so the whole family can kinda come out there. They can bring up the whole family and have a playground for the little ones. So. We think it could open more doors for just, for all family involvement, pretty much.
Thank you.
Ms. Viholic, any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Amber.
No, I just think it's great you guys, you know, come out here and have the confidence to present something to us. And um, I think it's a great idea. Um, but I would encourage including bicycles into the park. Uh, cause my nephew, man, he used to fly high all those pits. That's, I call them pits. I don't know what y'all call them. But uh, he, he was awesome. So yeah, I really liked that idea.
Bikes are more than welcome.
Yeah, I think we could make it, you know, inclusive, you know, include those, I should say.
Yeah, of course.
How big an average skate park, size-wise?
So I don't exactly know the average, but the one I was looking at, and I think, so it was a very rough estimate. But the whole complex, it, cause it included a basketball court and all these area for seating, the whole thing was about eight thousand square feet. So. I think that was for that specific one, but there's definitely, and in our presentation, we also um, included uh, people who built the Waxaw Skate Park Polar design. And they're the ones who were, we have all their contact information. They were the ones who were.
How many pits or, I, I call them pits again, um, are generally in a skate park? Cause I know the one in where I'm from originally, they have several holes, if you will.
I know Grayson Skate Park has one. That's in the Charlotte area. And Renaissance, I know they don't have one. That's more of a smaller one. And Waxaw, they have one.
Yeah, that's not even like a.
Get a little crowded, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
On the weekend.
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty small.
Yeah, we'd need more than one hole, I would say, or pit.
I agree.
What do you call it?
It's called bowl. Yeah, bowl.
Okay, good answer. Yeah.
We got a one point eight million dollars left in a park bond. And if you looked at the land available, I don't know what's available at Crooked Creed, eight thousand square foot wise. Uh, we got some swamp land over there is what I call it. But um, um, the, but what we've done is authorize across the street over there, we've got some land and we've authorized to look in at putting a smaller soccer field over there and some parking. We haven't approved that yet. We just authorized looking into what it's gonna cost. I don't know how much of the one point eight million bond is gonna be left or, or if we'll authorize that. But uh, we got land here beside the building. We got ten acres off Old Monroe Road. So those haven't been designated for park or skate park. But uh, but you know, your, your concept is possibly doable under our park bond. So I'm gonna suggest you get with Mr. Kramer and look at practical things of cost, things. And then at some point, if council's okay, is, you know, we could make a decision on it. Uh, you know, cause my thing is, is it's one thing to talk about, it's another thing to get it moving.
Yeah, a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
So like, you know, it's, it's okay with Mr. Kramer. If they could set up a meeting, we do have a Parks and Rec Committee. I don't know if they wanna look at it. But um, those type of things is, and we do, we, we do have the money that was approved by the voters for, you know, the park bond money. And we still got I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, one point eight million, Jim, still left in the park bond money. And we may be on a land squeeze depending on whether we wanna use some of this other land for something like this or not. So. Uh, I'm all for as long as everybody else is letting these two guys meet with Mr. Kramer and uh, and Mr. Mc Lamb there and see what we can do. Is that okay with you guys?
That sounds awesome.
Understand. What did y'all, y'all go to college at?
I go to App State.
App State?
I go to Central Piedmont.
Okay. Yeah. We got an App State grad down here, so he might be more for it now. I got a son's App State grad, so here. Mount Neers, man.
Roll Neers.
Just one more question. Does a skateboard have a weight limit? Some of us might wanna know.
Not that I know of.
Oh, yeah. I'd be all right. I'd break my neck, but it'd be all right. And some people would be happy about that.
I think it'd be all right.
But thank you for coming. Anybody else got any questions?
No, I just wanna say thank you. In a day and age where everybody's behind the computers all the time, I think something that encourages our youth to get out is a good idea. So.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a, a new business or here in uh, Second Chance Boutique. Can you come up and introduce yourselves and tell us about your wonderful business?
Hi, um, my name's Kim. I am the store manager at our new Second Chance Boutique. And Mari is one of my associates there. And um, we just wanted to tell you a little bit about it. Um, we actually um, are owned by Turning Point. Turning Point is our parent company. And um, they run the only domestic violence shelter in Union County. They also run the Tree House, which is an access center for children who are dealing with domestic violence, and it's a sexual assault center. So um, we have four stores, Indian Trail being the very newest one. We opened October first. All four of our stores are called Second Chance Boutique. And then we also have a Second Chance Boutique Home Decor. So three boutiques and a home decor store. All of us support Turning Point. All of our net proceeds go to support Turning Point and survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. Everything in our stores are donated. And um, we have great community sport, support, which is awesome. Our shelter is a forty-two bed shelter. And um, we take in women and children there. We also take in men as well. We just don't put them in our shelter. We find another location for them. Be it in a hotel or a men's shelter. So we support all survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. Some people think immediately it's just women and children, but it's not. It's men as well. So we support all of them. We have, um, let's see. Our newest location op- um, opened October first, as I said. Um, and we are, our stores are thirty-five percent of the income that Turning Point brings in to support those services. The other thirty-five percent or another thirty-five percent comes from grants. And then the last thirty percent comes from community support and from um, donations and fundraisers. So it's very important, our stores, without our stores, we wouldn't be able to run our shelter or the Tree House. So we need as much support as we can, people coming in shopping. So we wanna get the word out about our new store and get people in. We want to have great foot traffic. Our Waxaw store has amazing foot track, um, foot traffic. Our Monroe store gets great foot traffic and our home store gets um, pretty good foot traffic as well. So we're trying to get the word out that we have a new store and we wanna get people in there shopping and um, support the community.
Um, we sell clothes, shoes, um, for men, women, and children. We have toys. We have books. Uh, we've got jewelry. We've got all kinds of stuff in our store. And you know, and everything's donated. So it is incredible what people like will bring us. Everyone is so generous. So. Yeah, please come out and support us.
We have a ton of stuff that's like new with tags. We only put the best stuff on our floor. Um, we don't keep anything that's not in excellent condition. So we only sell really great stuff. We, we consider ourselves a boutique versus a thrift store. We're a secondhand boutique. So. But um, yeah, so we just wanted to tell you about that. And I do have business cards for you guys too that has our um, address locations of all of our stores. So I will give all those to you guys. And thank you for letting us tell you about them.
For the benefit of everybody, can you tell us where it is?
Oh, yes, it is. So it's at thirteen eight oh three East Independence Boulevard. It's in the shopping center right behind the Chick-fil-A. Right next door to Rosini's, which is an amazing restaurant, by the way. If you haven't eaten there, you wanna check that out too. Um. Yes. Um, also Saturday, we are participating in a pop-up event at Bestie's Boutique, which is another great um, store right down from us. They um, have been really great to um, give us amazing support and allow us to come out to all of their pop-up events without charging us a fee, which is really great. And um, they have tons of vendors out there. They'll have um, food trucks and just great, you can find anything you want there. This is the, the Galentine one. So it's like for um, Valentine gifts and things like that. So you wanna come out and check that out. And there's actually another one on March nineteenth. Will be another one right before St. Patrick's Day. And then there's gonna be a night one um, on June twentieth, I think. It's the day before Father's Day. It's gonna be an evening event. Um, so a Saturday evening from four to nine. So. You guys can come support us at all of those. But come to our store. We're open Monday through Saturday, ten to five. And we'd love to see all you guys shopping out there. And anything you guys can do to put the word out and get traffic in our store would be amazing.
So for donations, do they just drop it off at that store?
Um, so donation-wise, we can't pull up to the back of our store. Our other buildings in Waxahs and Monroe and our home store, you can pull right up to the back of the building. And there's someone there to help you unload your car and bring the stuff in right into the, you, our warehouse in the back. Our store, there's like a sidewalk and trees, so you can't pull up to the back. But we have been accommodating small donations there. Um, we get the bulk of our donations from Waxahs and Monroe. They'll bring us a truck twice a week. And we put out new stuff every single day. So it's constantly rotating new stuff. So you wanna come all the time so you don't miss anything. So. And we have a Facebook page. Um, we, all the stores post all the time, stuff that we have in our stores. So you'll see posts from Waxahs and Monroe and Indian Trail. So.
I'd like to ask that question. We have a, town has a certificate of appreciation.
Oh, cool.
I'd like to present you. And Ms. Ball from our communication department, wanna take your picture from up here, please.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have staff tenure recognition. Ms. Warner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This podium over here will be a good place.
I just didn't wanna come up here, that's all. No, I'm just kidding. Um, good evening, council. I am here tonight to um, recognize several of our employees for um, service recognition. Several of you were at the um, holiday event that we had in December. Um, but I just wanted to um, recognize these staff members again because it is a big accomplishment. We do this every year at our holiday events. We recognize years of service um, for employees that have been with us for five, ten, fifteen, and twenty years. So we present them with a plaque with the town logo and their name and their years of service. And um, we recognize them at all staff. Um, but I did want to um, take an opportunity to recognize them again publicly. We've also um, posted this on our town's, town newsletter and on our Facebook page. And I hope I don't screw this up. Um, so I'm just gonna, there's six employees that we recognized this year. And I'll just be quick because a lot of them are not, were not able to be here tonight. So um, Ryan Keiker celebrated ten years. Interesting tidbit about him, he was one of the first public work, Public Works employees hired, correct, Adam? Um, and now he is our crew leader and he oversees six employees. So um, the town is growing and so is our staff. Mike Wright celebrated ten years in September of twenty twenty-one. And um, he is now overseeing three crews within the Public Works Department. CJ Raul um, celebrated five years and he is also in our Public Works Department. Adam likes to keep his employees here. Um, he's uh, helped with the Veterans Memorial, the Affinity Trail, and the Splash Pad Upfits at Crooked Creek Park. And Kevin Melton, also in Public Works, um, celebrated five years in April of twenty twenty-one. And um, he oversees our parks and grounds maintenance. He's the supervisor. And Jim, I think everybody knows Jim. He's our finance director. Um, he has been with us for actually coming on six years in March of twenty twenty-one. And um, he has been our finance director the whole time and has been very good at keeping us uh, fiscally fit, if that's the right word. Thank you, Jim. And then Hayden, is he so with this? Um, Hayden celebrated, well, six years in January of twenty twenty-one. And um, Hayden was hired as our parking recreation specialist. And um, pretty quickly, it was promoted to our events coordinator. And now he is our parking recreation director. So um, congratulations to Hayden and Jim and all the other staff members I recognized for um, being with us for so long. And we hope we have many more years with you. Um, another thing that I wanted to um, bring to your attention is, I don't know if it's on the next slide. Um, we have hired some new employees um, in January and December of last year. Um, they weren't able to be here tonight either. So I just wanted to um, mention their names and what departments they're in. So if you see some new faces around town, you'll, you'll know who they are. Um, we have Josue Pina, who was hired in our planning department as our planning technician. We have Tyler Iaski, is that right? Who was hired in planning as our planner. And then we have Joseph Castellone, who um, was hired in Public Works as our maintenance tech. And Brian Rooney was. The, uh, initially I'd like to speak of regarding the mayor and I apologize for not being here at the last meeting. Um, but, um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide a couple of words from me as well as the sheriff. On behalf of Sheriff Kathy and the entire staff and County Sheriff's Office, I'd like to offer our deepest sympathy to the Alvarez family at the loss of their father and husband, to the council at the loss of, I know someone that many of you considered a dear friend and colleague, and to the residents of Indian Trail, whoever the last twelve years supported and trusted Michael Alvarez to lead and develop this town in a direction of success and prosperity. To many in this town, Michael was larger than life. Through health batter, health battle after health battle and throughout the limited years I knew him and every conversation we had, the importance of this town and its people was always evident. Whether you agree with him or not, Michael would always find a way or bring the right people together to accomplish almost anything. He was always the first one I heard from when my office would announce our involvement with a toy or food drive with the how can I help or tell me what you need. But I know as you all do, that was just the tip of the iceberg for him when it came to his involvement in any endeavor that would help this town. Personally, I'm going to miss his repeated phone calls and wanting to know what's going on over here or why traffic is backed up at Sun Valley at three o'clock in the afternoon. And him repeatedly telling me to fix it. It only took me a year to finally tell him that if he didn't want the three o'clock traffic to put that mayor title to work and change the school hours. I think as time went on, I knew when he was going to call about something, but I also knew how much of a help he was when it came to getting a message out or receiving information from the community. I think regardless of the circumstances, Mike would want the success that the town has achieved during his tenure as mayor to continue to strive ahead. We know the loss, especially when it's sudden, it's a hard pill to swallow. But more times than not, we are often left with a sense of wanting to remain on the same course that we were left pointed in. I pray for the family and this council in each their own way will continue to strive for the success and prosperity that Mayor Alvarez always envisioned. Again, thank you for this opportunity and my deepest condolences to the family. Uh, there in front of you, I've laid the, uh, the two monthly reports, one from December and one from January, which you can peruse at your, uh, at your leisure. Uh, but a couple of things I would like to point out, uh, initially starting with December, uh, you had two hundred and forty-nine, uh, total reportable offenses, which is based off of that graph there you see in front of you. But it's also based off, uh, for those of you that are new to council, if you look at the back, you've got five pages that give you a detailed list of each call for service in town and what there's based off on. Every one of those calls that we respond to, which I think for December was five thousand and something, five thousand events? Yes, five thousand three hundred and seventy events. Every one of those, we don't do, do paper, what I call doing paper on or doing a report for. Um, under USR reporting, uh, with the FBI, those are, those are reportable offenses that you see in that graph. We have to take reports for and the reports are filed. That's what affects our crime rate and the low crime rate that we have here in Indian Trail that I'm very proud of. Uh, but also along those lines, we had two hundred sixty-nine business checks, uh, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three preventative patrols. Then on the crash side, we had a hundred and thirty-one crashes in town and twenty of those resulting in injury. With the, one of the pages you got there, which it may be the final one in this packet, uh, that you've got for December, uh, that's the tra, the two traffic grant cars that we've got that are going into their, are in their second year now under the grant. What they have been tasked with is not only enforcement, but reducing injuries and crashes. And that was the big thing that we were trying to get down and those numbers are falling. But then the grant guys, uh, and just those two grant guys wrote ninety-four warnings in the month of December and then had two hundred and seventy-six criminal and traffic Then for the month of January, uh, two hundred and sixteen reportable offenses, which was down from December, three hundred and eighty-two business checks, uh, two thousand five hundred and sixty preventative patrols, um, hundred and twenty-one crashes, which was down. And then also the seventeen of those, hundred and twenty-one resulted in injuries, which was also down. Uh, the traffic guys, uh, two hundred and forty-eight total stocks, hundred and forty-two warnings, thirteen criminal charges, and then three hundred and sixty-seven traffic charges in the month of January. But as you look through those packets, you can see, um, as you get to those latter pages in that packet, they're, they'll detail that call list for you to kind of give you an idea over those two months of the span of calls for service that we saw. Also in the month of December and January, I wanted to speak to it right quick, but the, uh, our, some of you may know and some of you may not, I had three guys that are dual-trained in ABC Law that were trained by alcohol law enforcement with the state to handle tobacco, alcohol sales and that kind of thing in the town of Indian Trail. We conducted an underage campaign during the month, this month of December and January, but I also wanted to tell you we weren't able to hit every location in the town of Indian Trail over the period of a week that sold either tobacco or alcohol because there's just so many of them. So, we pulled them out of the hat, basically is how, how we did it. Um, we had six charges made, so six stores sold to underage on the tobacco side, which were less than eighteen years old at ten locations, out of ten locations that were tried. So, a little over half of the locations. Had thirteen out of twenty-three locations that sold alcohol to underage. I wanted to tell you those numbers for one thing. I spend probably a little over a year since we have done, I don't want to call it a sting because it's not. We're just, we're trying to get, we're responding to complaints we receive from the community. But we also want to keep, I want to praise the businesses that are doing what they're supposed to be doing. That's the big deal. And then correct the ones that are not. That's basically what this is based off of. But I wanted to, to kind of give you an idea about that. The yearly numbers, I'm still compiling, but there's a couple of numbers that I saw that I wanted to, I just wanted to kind of throw out to you to kind of give you an idea about what we were dealing with. In twenty twenty, there was twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven law enforcement calls for service in the town of Indian Trail. In twenty twenty-one, there was twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-three. So, we dropped three hundred calls, okay? In twenty twenty, out of those twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven calls, ninety-four hundred and eighty-two were answered by an Indian Trail car. So, the staff that you have got on staff here at Indian Trail answered ninety-four hundred of those twelve thousand calls. So, or somebody, so what's lacking there is somebody else came out from in the county somewhere to answer, to help out. That number went up significantly, a little over two hundred from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Even though the calls dropped by three hundred from twenty to twenty-one, the number of calls that we answered, and what I mean by we is the, the Indian Trail cars, went up a little over two hundred. Calls for service were answered by an Indian Trail car, dedicated car. Also in those numbers, I saw the, the, the traffic crashes for twenty twenty, we had one thousand three hundred and sixty-nine crashes in twenty twenty. In twenty-one, that number dropped by forty-five to thirteen twenty-four. Hundred and eighty dropped from nineteen to twenty, that was the first year of the grant, first year the grant started. And we dropped another forty-five in the twenty-one going into the second year of the grant. So, that grant is doing what we wanted it to do. Now, I'd like it to be reduced even more, but you know just well as I do, we're not going to fix everything. We're trying to reduce them and trying to reduce those injuries. But like I said, I'll have these numbers compiled hopefully by sometime in March to give you a full, so you can kind of see a snapshot of the full year and what took place from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. But the, uh, guys are doing good work and I can't praise them enough to tell you how hard they're working for you and especially the ones that are assigned here in Indian Trail. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, um, seventy-five percent of the calls were by Indian Trail, uh, sheriff. Um, are we short on deputies?
I don't want to say I'm short. I'll work whatever you give me.
Well, I mean, I mean, do we need more to cover? I mean, because we're pulling from, you know, Monroe or wherever and then maybe even the highway patrols looking at it.
That's, well, it's a loaded question too, Mr. Ambury. Do I need help? Yes. But it would be selective, uh, to what I would ask for when the time comes.
Sure. Well, we just want to make sure you have everything you need.
Oh, I understand.
And I'm sure the whole board agrees with that.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah. That's it.
You got any questions? You're all doing a great job. Budget Tom, like we echo what he said, I, I look forward to helping you get what you need.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, the last item there I was asked to speak about was the public safety committee and, or the public safety work group, not so much committee. I laid that list of the, the members there in front of you along with their email addresses. Uh, that work group consists of Indian Trail staff directors, town directors, um, myself as well as the fire chiefs that cover the town of Indian Trail. And what, how we've done this is get together and we've got the people in the same room that can get just about anything done that we think can get done or addressed, meeting every three months. If somebody in the community has a public safety concern or something of that nature, but it's more about the networking ability to where I can, if I need something from Henry Bridge Fire Department, I pick the phone up and if Adam needs something from pub, or from Henry Bridge Fire Department or Stalls Fire Department, we're trying to get everybody on the same page. One of the reasons for including, uh, Parks and Rec with Hayden is he conducts so many events in different areas of town is that we're trying to give the fire departments access to things that they didn't have access to before. Uh, one of those things, me and Miss Ball, um, and getting the town PIO involved in their events as well as getting the fire service and EMS involved in our events, uh, to kind of, kind of knock that wall down. But as we deal with, if somebody has concern, I think pretty much the way we dealt with it in this first meeting we had in January was that we would bring it in, bring it in to the group and then somebody in that room, regardless of who it was sent to, should be able to deal with it or should have pretty close to an answer for it. But I think progressing as we go, our next meeting's in March and the, uh, I look forward to working with the group. Got a, a good bunch of people.
I got questions, Mr. James. You got questions? That's it.
I just, I was saying, so I talked to Charlie Porter and the chief over there and he praised this committee you put together. So, evidently, you know, the first meeting was very successful and he's, he's looking forward to, I think it's quarterly.
He's fed us good, yeah. Yes, sir.
And, you know, so that, that, that was very good and I just want to say is I think you're doing a great job and I know Michael Alvarez would really appreciate the words that you put together for him.
I appreciate that.
And praise him. I, you know, we, he was an extreme supporter of the fire, I mean, of the sheriff's contract and your department and overall. And I know since I've been here, we've, in the budget have added deputies and, and things that you needed. And I know he was a big proponent of making sure that you had what you need and, and I, I really admire the words that you said and I know, I know, I know, I know he would be extremely pleased with that proclamation or whatever you call it, what you did, uh, you know? So, I appreciate it. Anybody got anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilwoman Buholick's made the motion. All approved, so raise your hand. Thank you. Um, next we have a public hearing. My opinion is Arringill Annexation. And we have, uh, Ms. Dees up. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pretzian and council members. Pleasure to be before you tonight for our only public hearing, eight ten Arringill Lane. And this is a, um, annexation for a single-family residence that's, um, existing. So, briefly, this property, um, consists of point two five four acre parcel. The property is in the portion of Callenwood that is Union County unincorporated. Um, and we will be looking to assign a zoning designation on the February twenty-second town council meeting. This is an aerial map, just to kind of give you an idea of where it is, if you're not familiar, um, kind of across the street from Brickhaven, just down from Austin Village off of Chestnut Lane. This is existing, um, photo I took from Google. The snowman doesn't look so great, but, uh, he's probably been removed by now. And then this is the existing zoning map. So, if you're paying close attention, there's a little bit of yellow seeping into that red square. Going to go ahead and be transparent about that. We spent a couple of, uh, months back and forth with the county before we brought this to you. Um, there was records of this parcel being split. However, um, Union County and the town of Indian Trail staff decided that they, this parcel had never paid taxes to the town and to simplify it, it was to just bring the whole parcel in rather than having to have it surveyed and make it complicated. So, there's a little bit of yellow, but tonight, um, if approved, you would be filling in the rest of that square. And here is your, uh, one set process for decision. And just quickly, uh, why do they want to annex? The answer's always the same, they want services and mostly they want sanitation services. I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Yeah, just that one house out of the whole comm, community? What, what's, then you said the, the whole community's part of Union County?
So, this subdivision is, um, in good old Union County fashion divided. So, parcel, uh, partially Union County unincorporated and then all of the yellow on the front side is Indian Trail.
So, the entrance is, um, in Union Tr, Indian Trail property, entrance to the house? The street coming to it?
So, the street, uh, the street would end where, um, currently where the boundary ends, so right there at that red line. Until it, until it's annexed and then the portion in front of them.
I guess what I'm asking is, so the street is in Indian Trail already? That would, where we access their san, for the sanitary, all that? Is that a street that's covered up by the red line?
So, the, uh, Arringill is, the street is in town-maintained property, our town-maintained right-of-way from the front of the neighborhood up into the end of where roughly the yellow is at now. And that's where our right-of-way stops and then Union County right-of-way would start for the roadway that's further back past there.
But once it's annexed, that, that line moves over.
At this point, I'd like to open the floor for public comments.
Is that a street that's covered up by the red line?
So the Arringill is, the street is in town-maintained property, our town-maintained right-of-way from the front of the neighborhood up into the end of where roughly the yellow is at now. And that's where our right-of-way stops. And then Union County right-of-way would start for the roadway that's further back past there.
But once it's annexed, that, that line moves over.
Questions? At this point, I'd like to open the floor for public comments.
If anyone would like to speak, now's the time on this project. If there are none, you can just close the public hearing.
I'll close public comments, then at this point, I would need a motion for annexation.
I make the motion to approve annexation ordinance one sixty-four.
Councilwoman Buholick's made the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dees. Next, we have Old Business Indian Trail Road, Mr. Hunt Singer, and with that great name, Todd, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor Pretium and council. For the new council, we brought this to the previous council back in October of last year. We requested DOT to abandon Indian Trail Road and for, in order for us to basically take over the road. They took it to their board, which was held in December. So around Christmas time to early next, first of January, we found out, I received a phone call saying it went through. And so we've decided to move forward with an actual resolution to actually accept the road. The previous resolution basically stated that we were asking them to abandon the road in order for us to take it over. So now we're officially asking y'all to take the street over. And just so you know, so everybody's aware, and everybody in the office is aware, we're taking the road from seventy-four all the way to Brewster's Ice Cream, I think is what it's called. For the simple fact is DOT still has to do their open, open road widening project, and they have, will have impacts to that section of Indian Trail Road. So they would like to keep it in order to do those. And then possibly we would take it over after that or just leave it as is. But either way, that's, that's the boundaries, and that is on the map that was in the agenda packet. Any questions?
Yeah, Todd, we have a couple potholes up there. Seriously, by that hardware store there, Ace, I believe it is, right now, so we need to get those fixed. But anyways, that's beside the point.
Yeah, I will tell you that we, we are thinking about, and it'll be obviously up to y'all eventually, but our next resurfacing contract, putting in some additional patching along that roadway for now.
So we're inheriting the potholes too, then? Councilwoman Gay, do you have any questions?
Don't think so.
No questions. I don't have any questions. We, we've talked about this a lot, and I appreciate all the information. Mr. Hunt Singer, I need a motion.
I, I have motion to adopt the town, the town adopt the road?
Resolution.
Number one. Date of February eighth, twenty-twenty-eight, or twenty-twenty-two, regarding adoption IT Indian Trail roadway segment adoption.
Councilman Amber, he's made the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carry unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Shady Bluff project decision. It's okay, y'all make the motion on this unless anybody's got any questions.
Yeah, I got a question.
Got a question.
I thought a long time about our discussion last week about the street. And I probably been the one that's the most critical about it when I saw the cost. And, and I still don't really support the street. But thinking about it, and what we do today, you know, affects things probably twenty, thirty, forty years in advance. And when we talked about it, Adam, when we talked, and Todd, when we talked about it, they, my one concern was that it is one of our streets, but we don't have a right-of-way on the street. And any, I mean, really kind of good business for, I think, any kind of municipality is to have a right-of-way. And if we do get a right-of-way, and what we do today, whichever way we go will affect it for years in advance. And so I'm against spending taxpayers' money here in Indian Trail on that road and the amount of money they're willing to put on it. But from what you told me, Adam, and I think Todd, there's money coming from some of these projects that other people are paying for that would actually pay for the right-of-way on that road? Did, did I understand that right when we were discussing it?
Todd, you can come out. You've got more information probably than I do.
Ms. Gay, that is correct. We feel like some of the other projects, we won't spend all of the designated money that's in your CIP ordinances. So there's some savings there that would contribute to fulfilling just at least the right-of-way portion of that project.
So it wouldn't come out of Indian Trail taxpayers' pocket to do the right-of-way?
No, no, sir.
Right. So I don't want, I don't like the road, but I don't like the fact that we don't have right-of-way on the road. So that in the future, if things change or some kind of facility change over there, and all of a sudden we decide that, or anything like a utility or whatever, whatever we might need to do on that road in the future, that we'd have the right-of-way where we could go in and do it. So I'm kind of wondering if the council would consider it like an adjustment to the, to our recommendation on the motion and just do the, the right-of-way, which is really kind of good business for any road to have a right-of-way on it and forget this, this road for any time in the future, right now. Would the attorney have any comments on that?
Do you have a motion you want to make?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that, let me see, our motion here. Okay, I would like to make a motion on Shady Bruff Road. It doesn't have a number or anything to it, that we, that we do the right-of-way for the road, by the right-of-way, but that we take the, any kind of improvements on the road off, off the agenda on it. How would that do?
Can you look at the motion on your sheet? I'm sorry, I missed part of the.
Okay, basically just change, take it and change it. Change.
I think the motion suspends it the way it is, but we don't do anything, but we can always come back. If we want to spend the ten million we're getting from the state towards that, and we can come back and instruct staff to work on it later with the current motion. I think, so that's my understanding correct. We're just suspending them, y'all doing anything on the road currently.
That's the way the motion's written that's on the piece of paper. If we're being asked to do right-of-way right now.
Exactly.
Then we need to clarify that.
We would need a different motion that, we'd need to amend the motion that you have drafted in front of you, correct?
Yes, can you, can we? Yes, can we suspend? Can you just take out suspend?
The state requires.
Why don't we, why don't we work on this and put it to the next meeting?
That's fine, okay.
That okay with everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I'll get something out.
I think that's, that's a smart business to have the right-of-way on any road we got in town. And, you know, I'm not for that road, but in the future, if things change, we've already got the right-of-way that we can do something with, so it doesn't block us out of, you know, whoever comes along with some need in the future, we'd have it.
So what we'll be, what y'all are directing staff to do is to come back at the next meeting.
We'll just see. Let's, let's see how the meetings go. We're supposed to meet later this week about this money, so let's see how that goes.
We'll just table it for right now.
Thank you, and my apologies for stepping up.
That's fine.
And just so everybody's aware, the design of that road is fairly done. I mean, it's not going to take long to finish that design, so once we wrap that up, we, right-of-way could be fun.
Yeah, you just take that money, finish the design, get the right-of-way, purchase it, and then we'll just, you know, sometime in the way distant future, if we need to do something over there, we'll have it.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. On the new business, we have a dedication, and we're going to need a motion on this. And I think since, if everybody's okay, I think we should give, since it was her idea, I think we should give Councilwoman Buholick the honor of making the motion.
I make the motion to dedicate the Indian Trail Town Hall to the memory of Michael L. Alvarez, mayor of the Town of Indian Trail during the period November twenty-ten to January twenty-twenty-two.
We have a motion to dedicate the Indian Trail Town Hall in the memory of Michael Alvarez. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion is unanimous. Next is, I understand, Councilwoman Buholick, you have a, you have a proclamation.
I do have a proclamation. Whereas the Town of Indian Trail takes a moment to recognize, honor, and remember the life the most loved and respected man, Michael L. Alvarez. Whereas Michael L. Alvarez was born August twenty-first, nineteen-sixty-nine, in Brooklyn, New York, and after moving to Indian Trail, was seated as the town's mayor on December thirteenth, twenty-eleven. Whereas Mayor Alvarez, while being a devoted husband to his wife Jill and loving father to their three children, faithfully served the people of the town by always being available and lending a helping hand whenever he could. Whereas Mayor Alvarez used his leadership to bring light to many difficult issues using town proclamations and always remembered the most important events at the beginning of each meeting through a moment of recognition and silence. Whereas Mayor Alvarez used his mayoral, memorial, sorry, privilege to champion those individuals who also made outstanding contributions to the town through countless awards and special recognitions. Whereas Mayor Alvarez, while quick-witted and humorous, was serious about his job and truly desired to leave Indian Trail a better place than the day he found it. Whereas Mayor Alvarez battled illness his entire life, he never complained and accomplished many things for the town. Whereas Mayor Alvarez went to his heavenly home on January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and his light will forever shine on Indian Trail over the people and things he loved, and he will never be forgotten. Whereas in fond memory of Mayor Michael L. Alvarez, we dedicate the Indian Trail Town Hall to him and will place his proclamation and a photo of Mayor Alvarez in the main area for all to be encouraged and to remember a man who loved this town. Now, therefore, I, Crystal Buholick, council member, on behalf of Indian Trail Council, do hereby call the citizens of the town to join council in remembering and honoring Mayor Michael L. Alvarez this eighth day of February twenty-twenty-two, and in dedicating this building belonging to the citizens of the town of Indian Trail to his memory.
Thank you. Very beautiful. And Mr. McLam, can we make sure we got the plaque and everything there, maybe in Town Hall and the proclamation and put up?
Yes, sir, we'll get that done.
Thank you. Anybody got anything they want to add on that? Thank you. Next, we have a quarterly updates to financial, Mr. Wallowich. And I'm, one day, I'm going to make sure I'm saying that right.
Thank you. Crystal, thanks for that. Michael, he was, he was always great to me, and the first day I was here, he was always supportive, and I miss him. And I was very. So my mission tonight is to give you a brief update on the results of the town finances. We're halfway through the year, Dennis. It's hard to believe. Senior accountant Alicia Gaddy and myself met with all the departments on the week of January fifth. And the meetings are relaxed and are very informative, and Mike is very much involved. He always likes to know what's going on. He sits in with the money can. So it's a real top of the, from the top of the organization on down. And I'm happy to report all the departments are either on budget or better than budget. So we're in good shape all the way through. I'll go through a couple highlights for you. The grants outside agencies, this is always popular, this is in your budget. The budget at forty-five-hundred dollars so far, we've expended two thousand. So we still have twenty-five-hundred dollars on the books for the rest of the year. Needed vehicle and equipment purchases. Public Works Director Adam does a good job, even with the shortages. Adam likes to get his equipment early in the year, and he's gotten vehicles, and so that part is working as well. Tax collections, as of January thirty-first, we've exceeded our annual budget already. It's over nine million dollars. So the rest of the year, everything we get will go to surplus. We're figuring that'd be about close to four hundred thousand dollars that will go directly to the bottom line. Because we budget ninety-six percent. So that extra four percent, and we collect, last year she collected ninety-nine-point-eight percent. And that's Alicia Massey. She does a great job down there. We keep our tax rate at eighteen-and-a-half cents, the lowest in the area. Very proud of that, and we're in the middle of budget season this year. And I know Mike and Todd, first thing we do is that eighteen-and-a-half cents stays. We're not going anywhere. Sales tax, we received five monthly installments, running fourteen-point-three percent ahead of last year. Last year was a record. So sales tax, we're doing great. ABC Distribution, we've gotten two out of the four installments. We're at ninety percent of our budget. They're building a new store. Everything with the ABC is good for the town. A star next to the planning revenues. Now, I don't know, Brandy's here tonight, she may have left, but her budget has exceeded halfway to the year, her revenue budget. So they're doing something right down there, Todd, in the planning department. Hayden's here, park revenue are back with the pandemic and all. Through January, Hayden's at about a hundred-twenty-seven thousand, so he's right on his budget for the year. And I know he picks up in the spring with the baseball and all the outdoor tournaments and stuff. The last two things, the ARPA money, as mentioned our last meeting, we've gotten final guidance. So we're, we're able to spend ten million dollars on the revenue replacement on government services, which is a pretty broad thing. Todd, we got your email today, and we're going to work with the attorney on that, but I think that goes forward. That's going in the right direction. Got to go through a couple things to do. And then we have the state grants. We've got three state grants on their budget this year. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for parks. Hayden's working on that. We'll have something for you later in the week, and we'll make some recommendations. Adam's been working on that. We got ten million for, it's got to be a capital improvement, over a hundred thousand dollars. And I know Adam is making a list up to go over with you guys. And then we got a fifty-thousand dollar commerce grant that Todd's working on. So financially, the town is in good shape. I've been here five years, Dennis, and I'd like to say I've been blessed to be here. I don't know what I waited for, but I'm here. So that's the financial update.
Sounds great. Anybody got any questions?
Part of the reason you like it down here so much because of the weather? I was in Albany not too long ago, so lots of snow.
Thank you.
Moving on then, Mr. Wallowich.
Keep going. Okay, the next thing is that we, I'm going to look for your confirmation on our audit RFP. On December first, my staff and I prepared an RFP for auditing services. Was out for fifty-one days, would request it to get back by closing business on January twenty-first. We received one response back, and that's the incumbent JB Watson and Company. And again, they come highly rated. I did check with another reputable auditing firm in the area, and they just said, here's a quote. Their reply was they're not seeking any new business based on their labor issues. My contact basically said three of his staff accountants had just left his firm to go into private industry. So the labor shortage is hitting the. So basically, again, I'm looking for you to make a recommendation, JB Watson and Company, to audit the next three years, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. I'm very comfortable with it, making that recommendation.
We need a motion then.
I'll make the motion. I make the motion to award the audit contract for the Town of Indian Trail to JB Watson and Company for the next three fiscal years, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four.
Councilwoman Buholick's made the motion. All in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you.
Carry unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wallowich. Great job. Next, we have ordinance for Ms. Queen's up.
I just would like to let you know this is the second viewing for the municipal code, and if we could call for a motion to adopt, that would be great.
We need a motion?
I make the motion to approve ordinance zero-zero, I'm sorry, yeah, ordinance zero-zero-one regarding adopting the revised municipal code, or yeah, municipal code for the Town of Indian Trail.
Councilwoman Buholick's made the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Motion's unanimous. We got surplus item, Mr. McLam.
So a couple, two years ago, we approved a vehicle replacement policy. So what that is, is that's how we surplus items out of our fleet of vehicles that we have. So some of our surplus items are for, are for vehicles that were in your packet. And then there's also a few other pieces of equipment that we've acquired over the years that we no longer use, that we'd like to put out for surplus to do that. By general statute, we have to come to council to ask for those items to be surplus. So that's what we're here tonight. Once, if y'all approve that, then Kathy will advertise it in the paper. And then after advertisement, we will actually put it up on GovDeals, which is like an online auction site.
Question, have you thought about or looked into Manheim? And how do your vehicles on government compares to Mannheim, which is a huge auction company for cars?
No, I have not. I'm writing a note.
Okay. Right now, with these dealers, they're fighting over cars on Mannheim. So that's something, maybe just take a look at.
We can definitely do that.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I make the motion to approve resolution number two, date of February 8th, 2022 regarding surplus items for the town of Indian Trail.
Councilman Amber, he's made the motion. All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, Mr. McLam. Motion carried. Discussion items? We have no discussion, I guess. We have a interim manager's update by Adam McLam, please.
I'll try and make this short and sweet, but there are a few items. First, thank you for trusting me to sit here tonight and be in this seat for the last couple of days while Mike McLaurin's been out. He did have surgery, like you said earlier. It did go well and he is recovering from that. We've been working with Union County to potentially open up a COVID testing site on one of the town properties. We are probably going to be doing that over on, in Crooked Creek. They're down to only testing about 20 people in their vehicles at a, on a day now. So it's not a very big draw. They don't think that they'll be doing it for more than about two to four more weeks. But they do need to move out of the location that they're at now, which is on Highway 74 at the Foodline Shopping Center. So they came to us to ask that if that's something that we could accommodate. We've done some discussions internally, talked with HR, talked with legal to make sure we're all good there and we'd be protected and fine. So we're going to move forward of doing that with them. Another thing would be, we have a few upcoming meetings I just want to remind everybody about. So we are in budget season, as Jim mentioned. So March the 19th and April 16th, we have two budget workshops. Those are on Saturdays. They have not been yet advertised, so we can change things if we need to. But right now, usually we meet at eight in the morning for breakfast and then we start the meetings at 8:30. Those meetings are open to the public, starting at 8:30 for the budget workshops.
What was April's date?
Yeah, April 16th.
Okay. Thank you.
And March?
March 19th.
March 19th.
What was the question, Carrie? We had, he changed it to March 19th and April 16th, and then the budget hearing is May 24th?
If, if I did give you the wrong dates, I'll send an email out tomorrow with updated dates.
19th and then the 16th, that's bona fide now?
But I will confirm, that was what the budget calendar was at the last meeting.
There is no Board of Adjustment meeting this month, just so you know that. And then, as you mentioned earlier, Mr. Barber, Councilmember Barber, we do have later this week some finance meetings and two by two groups with council, if they would like to come in and talk about some budgetary items. That is it for me this evening. Thank you.
Adam, if you could pull your agenda packet, the minutes are in there and the minutes list the new dates.
Anybody got any questions for Mr. McLam?
Y'all can go ahead, I'll come back.
No questions? No questions? Anyway, since you brought up prayers and thoughts to Mike McLaurin while he's recovering is, he's doing well enough. He's called me at least three times, so he's doing pretty good. The, so, but that's, so we wishing him well. Anything else or are we up to council comments?
I'm sorry, can I jump in?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I did give you all the wrong dates for the budget workshops. So the first budget workshop will be March the 12th. The second budget workshop will be April the 2nd.
That was my fault, I pulled the wrong note.
That's March 12th and April 2nd. Again, 8:00 AM for breakfast and then 8:30 open to the public. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. McLam. Acting manager. So council comments, please.
Mr. Gay.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. Also like to thank Adam and Brandy's, I think, left tonight. But I had a call from one of our celebrities in town, Brian Stickley, with some problems like a faded stop sign in his subdivision and requests for a little more police action, for speeders. And, and I guess they've got a lot of texters that come through and end up on the other side of the road. So thanks for you guys jumping on it and taking care of it. Appreciate our Sheriff's Department and their involvement in it. Hope you all have a nice evening and a great week. Take care.
I also just want to thank everyone for coming. It was nice to see, you know, more faces in the chairs today. I want to thank Adam for doing a great job and Kathy for doing a great job and all of our staff and our council. I think we have a great team and just have a great night.
Yeah, I just want to recognize Adam also, you've done a tremendous job, Adam and Mike's absence. The only other thing I really have to say is go Bengals from that area in 44 years and we're in the Super Bowl again. So wish us luck. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Buholic for the wonderful proclamation for Alvarez. He would certainly love that and the Sheriff's Department and Captain James for their kind words. I'd like to thank Frank Babylon and Troop and PAC 97 for inviting me out for a question and answer session. Those kids had their questions on the phone, let me tell you. There were some serious questions. I got asked about wastewater treatment plants, everything. So the, man, I hadn't been grilled that way since I've been on council. But anyway, I really appreciate them coming out. It was that, you know, they meet over at the Spirit of Joy. And I just want to give a, them and Troop 276 are both sponsored by the VFW and they're both having a food drive. So if you want to reach out to them, if you can help them out on their food drive, that, the food will go to Common Heart is where they will send the money to. Other than that is, I really appreciate Mr. McLam, you're filling in and staff and everyone here working and doing a great job and helping me get through this agenda and everything as, as kind of a temporary mayor here. But other than that is, I want to wish everybody a happy Valentine's Day. Love's in the air. So I know some of you look like some pretty romantics out there. So but other than that, have a nice evening. Thank you. Other than that, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mr. Councilman Amber, he's made the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.